Councilman Questa.
Here.
Councilman Grover, Councilman Torres, Councilman Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilman Canary.
Here.
Councilman Sedano.
Here.
Councilman Gorman.
Here.
Councilman Mazza.
There.
President Perkins to best.
Here. This is a regular conference of the city council as incorporated in the annuals meetings notice of 2015 which was filed at the city close office and posted on the bulletin board on December 23, 2014 and sent to the Star Ledger and the Home News Tribune in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Law of New Jersey. Is any residence or taxpayer wishing to address city council saying that the public forces speaking of the agenda setting meeting? We will go on to the other.
Okay. Letter dated May 12, 2015 from the Business Administrator requesting that city council reject all bids received April 29, 2015 for the furnishing of one 2015 or current model year Harley-Davidson FLHTP electric glide police motorcycle or equal for the police department and authorize the purchasing agent to re-advertise with revised bid specifications.
Any questions? Okay, put it on.
Letter dated May 15, 2015 from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to firefighter one Sparta, New Jersey for the purchase of personal protection items and equipment for the period May 13, 2015 through June 30, 2016 in the amount not to exceed $10,000 under the Morris County Cooperative Purchasing Contract.
Okay, any questions? Put it on.
Letter dated May 15, 2015 from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to General Sales Administration trading as Major Police Supply, Kentville, New Jersey for emergency lighting equipment for the Departments of Police, Fire and Ambulance Bureau for the period May 1, 2015 through April 30, 2016 at a cost not to exceed $200,000.
Any questions? Okay, put it on.
Letter dated May 15, 2015 from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Turnout Fire and Safety, Inc., Jersey City, New Jersey for the purchase of firefighter gear during the period May 1, 2015 through April 30, 2016 at a cost not to exceed $60,000.
Any questions? Okay, put it on.
Letter dated May 15, 2015 from the Business Administrator requesting to rescind the March 10, 2015 resolution of awarding a contract to Bay Chevrolet Monorail Pennsylvania for the purchase of one 2015 Chevy Tahoe as a replacement vehicle for the fire department at the cost of $32,658.55 due to General Motors ceasing production and recommending awarding a contract to Bayer Ford, Maristown, New Jersey for the purchase of one 2016 Police Interceptor SUV in the amount of $32,806.25 which will substitute for the previously requested vehicle.
Okay, any questions? Put it on.
Okay. The next letter is for the policy of insurance with James River Insurance Group covering professional liability for the engineer and staff for the period May 10, 2015 to May 10, 2016 at an annual premium of $38,787. Okay, because they have certificates now.
Okay. Put it on. Any questions?
Letter dated May 19, 2015 from the City Attorney requesting that your honorable body consider a resolution confirming the City Attorney's motion to intervene and represent the city's interests regarding the New Jersey American Water Company, Inc.'s petition seeking to increase rates for water and wastewater service and other tariff revisions including sales for resale of water.
Because basically they're trying to raise the rates and what department is going to representatives and try to prevent that from happening.
Exactly.
And they're trying to raise the 22.
Uh, it's, they're trying to raise all sorts of different tariffs, but the one that would specifically affect us is the one, is the tariff for this sale for resale of water for outside systems, which would be us, which would be the 23.77 percent, which is the biggest of all the increases in the tariff.
Okay. Anybody want to put it on?
Letter dated May 19, 2015 from Chief Financial Officer advising that additional grants may be appropriated in 2015 state fiscal year budget by Budget Amendment Chapter 159.
Okay, any questions? Put it on.
Letter dated May 19, 2015 from Chief Financial Officer advising that transfers for the 2015 state fiscal year municipal and sewer utility budgets may be necessary.
Okay, any questions? Put it on.
Letter dated May 12, 2015 from the Director of Health and Human Services requesting permission for the proper city officials to enter into an agreement with the YMCA Elizabeth to accept 50 children from the city's summer camp program to be included as part of the YMCA summer camp program for the period July 6, 2015 through August 14, 2015 at a cost of $25,000.
Any questions? Put it on.
Letter dated May 13, 2015 from the Director of Health and Human Services recommending awarding a contract to Visiting Nurse and Health Services Elizabeth for the performance of senior health promotion risk reduction services for the period May 1, 2015 through December 31, 2015 at a rate of $83 per hour not to exceed $7,926.50 unless further authorized by your honorable body.
Any questions? Put it on.
Letter dated May 13, 2015 from the Director of Health and Human Services recommending awarding a contract to Visiting Nurse and Health Services Elizabeth for the performance of health educator services for the period May 1, 2015 through December 31, 2015 at a rate of $73 per hour not to exceed $8,431.50 unless further authorized by your honorable body.
Okay, any questions? Put it on.
Letter dated May 13, 2015 from the Director of Planning and Community Development requesting authorization for the proper city officials to enter into an agreement with Harvard Consultants, Cranford, New Jersey to serve as the city planner for the period May 1, 2015 through April 30, 2016 at a total cost of $75,000.
Any questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to just remind that we, we're supposed to begin looking at this planner, uh, the master plan.
Yes.
And that hasn't occurred yet.
Um, yes, it's, I, based on a conversation I had with Director Rodriguez earlier today, Victor Staff has been internally preparing it and it's probably been the next month or so reaching out to individual council members to discuss the preliminary work and your concerns with regards to businesses, especially, I mentioned, the Roway Avenue.
But this has been going on for over a year.
Well, the, the, the master plan is, this is, the contract that's before you is the planner of record with regards to the planning board.
Yeah, I understand that, but it's all.
Um, yes, the master plan had been awarded earlier this year and they have been doing internal reexamination on preliminary work that they needed.
It was since last year. This was, this is re-awarded, I mean, planned, it's like last year or something.
I think they had been discussed last year, but I will, I mean, I will confirm, but I believe it was awarded earlier this year, but my understanding again is that there was a lot of prelimi, not preliminary, but internal work that they needed to accomplish before being prepared to come out and meet with the individual council members and that that would probably.
No, this is taken too long, because I remember, I remember last year.
Well, I will have a conversation and tell them to hurry up.
Yeah, we're gonna hold this up for a minute, because we've got.
But this is separate, Council President. This is with regards to the planning board. This has nothing to do with the master plan. This has to do with the planning board review and the work that, the ongoing work that he does on behalf of.
We've asked for that for, it's been a while, but it's, has not been this way, I believe it was last year.
And we started asking for it last year.
Yeah, last year.
And then we were to, to wait, uh, to this year to.
Right, it is, the contract, I mean, I will reconfirm, but my recollection, which could be incorrect, was that the contract was awarded probably in February of this year.
Yeah, I think it was early.
But the discussion has been going on, but again, this is a separate, but it's your province.
No, I need to check and see when you have voted the contract.
I don't have a problem with this necessarily, Madam President, just jot on memory of the others.
Yeah, you might, you might, but it's been a long time, because we've been asking about it. Yeah, it's, it wasn't just two months ago. It was not two months ago. Yes, consequently.
It's over two years when I request that we have a situation on Roway Avenue that was still waiting patiently, so, you know.
Your province.
Just to push the gas a little bit more.
Yeah, we're just gonna, we're still waiting, we'll hold it up. It's been, it's been years.
That's gonna, services for the planning is on the boards, correct?
Correct, yeah.
That's the only thing, Madam President.
Isn't that gonna stop, we can't go to the roll over until we give what we connect keep contract, that's what we do. That's what we do. It's been a long time, right?
Letter dated May 14, 2015 from the Director of Planning and Community Development requesting to rescind the resolution dated July 22, 2014 authorizing a grant in the amount of $20,000 for Y Homes, Inc. for Community Housing Development Organization operating expenses for the period July 1, 2013 through June 30, 2014. Regulations were not met, therefore the funds will be reallocated.
Okay. Any questions? Put it on.
Letter dated May 14, 2015 from the Director of Planning and Community Development requesting authorization for the proper city officials to negotiate and execute a redevelopment agreement with New Jersey Community Capital as the affordable housing redeveloper of 326 Magnolia Avenue, 118 Fulton Street, and 339 Marshall Street.
Okay, any questions? Put it on.
Letter dated May 14, 2015 from the Director of Planning and Community Development requesting to amend by resolution ordinance number 3158 designating the Elizabeth Avenue Partnership as the District Management Corporation of the Elizabeth Avenue Special Improvement District and the Elizabeth Avenue Special Improvement District Sunset Clause specifically to extend the term from September 1, 2015 until August 31, 2020.
Any questions? Put it on.
Letter dated May 19, 2015 from the Director of Planning and Community Development requesting that your honorable body consider approving urban enterprise zone second generation funds for the urban enterprise zone financial lending program Phase 9 statewide loan pool program, urban enterprise zone commercial loan, working capital loan program, and urban enterprise zone micro loan program for the period July 1, 2015 through June 30, 2016 in the amount of $1,915,107.41.
Okay, any questions? Put it on.
Letter dated May 19, 2015 from the Director of Planning and Community Development requesting that your honorable body consider approving the 2016 urban enterprise zone administrative budget in the amount of $348,190.16 and authorize proper city officials to enter into an agreement with the Elizabeth Development Company for the administration of the urban enterprise zone program as well as the urban enterprise zone second generation funds for fiscal year 2015, 2016 for the period July 1, 2015 through June 30, 2016.
Okay, any questions? Put it on.
Letter dated May 19, 2015 from the Director of Planning and Community Development requesting authorization to utilize urban enterprise zone assistance funds for the commercial district security program in the amount of $260,249.60 with the city providing a 20% match in the amount of $65,062.40 for the period July 1, 2015 through June 30, 2016 for a total project cost $325,000.
The commercial district, is all the districts, right?
Yes, that's in the second paragraph on the location.
Oh, okay, so it's all the commercial districts. Okay, any questions?
Yeah, Madam President. Is any, any, most of the time they used to do a little section on North Avenue from the highway and, I guess, into Jackson Avenue. That's not on there?
Yeah.
Um, I don't think so. I think as a reduction, I will find out, I don't.
Could you find that?
Yeah, you, I was thinking about Jackson Avenue going to, and they know you, because I think that that was included, we tried to include, yeah.
That was included also, let me check on that.
Rent a barber shop and a couple of the little stores. Thank you.
Yeah, check and see if they include that or, if, if not, if we can.
Yep.
Thanks. Thank you, Madam.
Any other questions?
Yes.
What if, um, this, one and nine, the corridor?
I was gonna, I was gonna mention that, but I, if I could get the one that you just mentioned, that's more important to me if, if it could.
It is.
Yeah, because you know, because, we haven't, but still, I don't have to tell you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. If I get those two, it'd be, they can prove that.
Okay. Any other questions? Put it on.
Letter dated May 8, 2015 from the Director of Public Works requesting permission to have liens placed against properties listed on schedule A attached here to for the removal and disposal of debris from said property in the amount of $546.2.
You're running a one property?
No, I was surprised, too.
Okay, put it on.
Letter dated May 19, 2015 from the Director of Public Works requesting that your honorable body consider authorizing the acquisition of property located at 30328 Atlantic Street for the anticipated construction of a subsurface stormwater storage facility at the intersection of Atlantic Street and Third Avenue.
Any questions? Put it on.
Councilman Torres has requested to have a handicap parking space at 125 Insel Place. Put on. Okay, letter dated May 18, 2015 from Mr. Samuel Arcuri requesting for the renewal of being a constable in the city of Elizabeth.
Okay, any questions?
No problem.
Okay, put it on.
Councilman Sedano has requested to put back on the permission to conduct the 12th Annual Colombian Independence Day Festival on Sunday, July 26, 2015 from 12 noon to 9:00 PM on Morris Avenue from Sayer Street to Julian Place and Westfield Avenue between North Broad Street and Harrison.
Madam President.
Yeah.
And council members, if we could put this on the agenda contingent to the, I had asked them, that has to say that they would partnership with the Morris Avenue Association.
Wait until we get there. I don't want to put it on there, but no contingencies.
Well, the only thing that, it's already gonna come up in July 26th. It's, we're two months away.
I know, but they should have worked out something between October and May. They haven't worked out at least anything?
Well, we, I mean, we've done similar things in the past, too, where if it gets, if it gets done before Tuesday, then it would be okay.
No, but I just, what I said to you was that, they even, they did this since October. They haven't worked out anything between October and May. That's what I'm, I'm asking you, Council.
Well.
Is it a yes or no?
Well, my, my request is what I said.
No, 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 but I asked your question.
No, I, but I'm not them, so I can.
No, I didn't, I'm not that, but you, you do them now, because you're, they're representative and you're speaking in their behalf, or you're advocating for them.
Well, I represent the fourth ward, I don't represent.
And they're part of the fourth ward?
Well, they, they are, they are, but pretty much how I said, they're, they're gonna bring in an updated form.
No, I said no. Okay, thank you.
All right, so it's still on?
Yeah, so they're bringing up the proper paperwork, yeah.
Okay. If they bring in the form before Tuesday's meeting.
Do you know?
Madam President, also, I recall, I believe, what, I think was the last time they had it, a lot of fights and.
Yes, many did, yeah.
They're gonna work out, I don't know if they have it worked out.
No.
Yeah, so it was, I know, a lot of fights and a lot of underage drinking, that type of thing, I recall, so they gotta work those things out. I don't know how they, or what they have it doing to kind of rectify these situations, but they need to really work on that.
I mean, if you want, we could, um, have them come.
I don't know what other the president suggests.
You're advocating for them, you said they're gonna bring a letter, let's see what they're doing. Yes, Council?
I don't understand what seems to be the problem. What, what they're missing, paperwork and sure, so.
Yes, exactly. Exactly.
Well, well, they did submit the paperwork, but, um, one of the things that, like, I always ask is that.
You already made a decision, is everybody gonna call, what's the next item?
All right. The tax abatement ordinance is scheduled to expire June 14, 2015.
That's right, that's right.
So in order for it not to expire before.
Did some of your colleagues, you received the tax abatement orders, like about two weeks ago, right? Did everybody look it over? If we wait until the next meeting, would that be too late or?
Yeah, it'll be too late, because, um, we have the May 26 meeting and then June 9. If you wait any later, it'll expire.
Okay, then put it on, I mean, it's, it's not, it's a detrimental, this is a detrimental thing.
This is a detrimental.
I just want to make sure that everyone takes, get an opportunity to take a look at it, because a lot of things have changed since we first instituted the tax abatement ordinance. So I just want to make sure, you know, the board council people, that you really take a look at, you know, Gorman and Gonzalez, you know, so you make sure.
I, I, I'm okay with that.
Did you take?
Yeah, I have a chance with you, I'm okay with it, yeah.
Mazza, you good with it?
Yeah.
Is everybody, if everyone's good, then we can put it back on, but I just want to make sure.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
You know what I'm saying, that if something, then they're like, oh, we should have made a change.
I have a chance with you, yourself.
Okay, okay. And if you have any questions, just come see the City Clerk office about that, okay? Sorry, that's why I'm.
Call the President.
Okay. Letter dated May 7, 2015, uh, from the City Treasurer submitting the Treasurer's report of receipts and dispersment for the month of January 2015 and statement of bank balances and investments as of January 31, 2015. And that's it for me.
Did you guys receive the information that the pre-Father's Day event?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so we just want.
Oh, okay.
And then also about the Juneteenth event?
Yes.
I just want to make sure that everyone, if you receive those pieces of information. Okay, and also, Nate Towns have Nate Dogg founding on June 4th, so there's a lot of events going on in the next couple of weeks. I just want to make sure everyone is aware of it. And before the ones around, um, oh, I'm sorry, can you acknowledge, Council, Paul Stewart?
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good morning.
Before the ones around, I want to put a resolution on calling for the Commissioner Carlos Trahilo to resign from his position as Board of Education Commissioner. It is my understanding that, um, I was told from the newspaper that he has sought his wife and that's called domestic violence. And as the only woman sitting on, on the city council, I think it's very important that I, if no one else, really advocate for any type of violence, but when it comes to domestic violence, that, that is a crime and, first of all, I really want to pray for his wife and hopefully, hopefully she, you know, is okay and can probably move forward in terms of what happened, but I'm hearing that he, like, punched her in the face and, as we all know, Mr. Trahilo is a huge, he's, you know, he's a healthy sized man, so punching a woman in the face, I can only imagine what that felt like physically, nonetheless, talk about all the emotional things that his wife may be going through. So I truly want to call for his resignation of the board so that he can take time to really sort out these issues which can lead to criminal, it's a criminal offense, domestic violence is a criminal, um, a criminal act and it's, it's just terrible. I think he's, he will set a bad, um, representation for our children in the school district which he's supposed to represent, and I see everyone, we have the article, it should be in your package, so the resolution will be on next week and I'm hoping I can get the support of my colleagues. Um, there's not enough that I can say about the effects of domestic violence, how it trickles down, um, through the family, you know, children see the mother, father fighting and then they take on those same behaviors, I mean, that's why there's so much violence in our society today, because it starts at home. You know, we don't, we don't want to face the fact, but it starts at home, so if there's love in the home, you know, you have love aboard, if there's violence, you have violence and so.
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
Madam President, I could say a lot, but let me simply say that I support you with our resolution 100 percent.
Thank you so much, yeah.
Yeah, Madam President.
Yes, Council?
I, I concur with, uh, Councilwoman Lloyd, I could say a lot also, but I will say this, as you know, this past year, uh, throughout the National Football League, there was a lot of football players was disciplined handling your domestic violence and, and I support this, uh, resolution. There's no need for, there's no, uh, for this type of action to take place against a, a woman, uh, and something has to be done and something should be done. If he had an indignity about himself, knowing how domestic violence is such a crude act against a woman, he should just volunteer, uh, step down. There again, I don't think he'd do that, but I think he should. Thank you, madam.
So you're saying he's the Ray Rice of Elizabeth?
Well, I didn't say, you, you called it. You, you called it, so, I mean, I mean, I, I mentioned the National Football League and you mentioned him as one of the person, there's others who have football, so you guys know what, who you are.
And Councilman Gorman, you, you are correct.
Excuse me.
You are correct, nationally, we have to take a stance on domestic violence, because after meeting with the prosecutor on a number of occasions, you know, trying to find ways to stem violence in our communities, domestic violence is on the rise.
Yes.
You know, domestic violence is, is on the rise, so we, you know, we really have to take a stand as, um, elected leaders, as, as leaders. I mean, what, what is that gonna say to the children if they see someone standing up there who's committed domestic violence and they, and you're trying to tell them, like, there's no tolerance, there's no bullying, there's zero tolerance for violence in the schools, but then you have someone sitting up there who's, who said, yeah, he punched her in the face, her face was swollen, and that's okay, so, you know, I hope everyone can join with me on that. Yes, Councilman, Councilman?
Madam, I, I hate to disagree, but, uh, I know Trahilo personally, even when he was a young boy and everything else, if something happened in a family, the duty calls, you're washing your family, personally, if we're looking upon the fact that it's a political agenda, then I could see you all in favor to lynch the guy instead of say, well, maybe you should go for help or whatever. I would like to wait, if it's possible, when, uh, they go before the court and decision is made, the wife usually and the husband, they're getting upset, whether it's jealousy or, I don't know the facts, whatever, I don't believe in the newspaper, I, I believe in a course of the law, you know, the law will set the course and will, probably will, she probably will, by the time she goes to court, she will repent or whatever, or he will repent, I mean, husband and wife, they have children, I do condemn the action and what you described, if that is true, so I don't believe that it's true, but if it is, you know, then you have. But if it is, you know, then you have to pay the consequence. But I think we're a little bit rushing. You know, everybody should put their hand on the top of the heart and say, ah, I have good hearts. Everybody should have a good heart. But if my heart says, you know, Mr. Mazza, you're really bad, you don't deserve to do this, and then, at the right time come. I think we're rushing a little bit too fast to do that. And we don't, I cannot agree all the time with city council, or disagree on this particular fact.
Can you say something?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I, I support your resolution that you want to put forward. I think domestic violence has no place, you know, in society. And, and it's interesting because the, the fact of the matter is that many women do recant after they've been abused. And later on, we'll read, and I'm not saying in this case, but later on, we read in the paper that they wind up getting killed and things like that wind up occurring because they do that. Because they want to save the relationship, because they want to save the family and those sorts of things. And no woman, no person should be subject to that sort of humiliation, embarrassment, you know, at all. So, I certainly support, I've unfortunately had previously the opportunity to work with, you know, women that were abused. And, and I got to witness some of what they've gone through. And it's not easy, it's gonna be emotional. I hope he gets the treatment that he's gonna need. I certainly will pray for him as well. And that she gets the healing that she will need to be able to get through. And the family, the kids. It's, it takes a toll on the entire family. It's a very difficult time, I know for everybody, so. But I certainly will support the resolution. Thank you, Madam President.
Madam President, I just wanted to add, like, I understand the resolution is calling for his resignation. Because next week is Youth and City Government Day, and in my opinion, that's one, probably one of the most special things that we do in conjunction and unity, like, with everyone throughout the city. My only recommendation would be to wait to another city council meeting because that day, because we're doing it in partnership with the board and everything else, I just think that it could leave, like, a bad taste on it. And I, I would hate for the Youth and City Government Day itself to, you know, to be affected by that. So, that would be my, my recommendation.
You know, I pray, and I prayed before I thought about bringing this to the council. And then a woman who is friends with Trujillo sent to me. I hope he, he just needs to resign. So, to me, that was this confirmation that this is what we need to do. We need to stand up. And this is one of the problems with domestic violence. When people know it exists, they try to say, well, maybe that's not really what's going on, or let's wait and see what happens. And just like Councilor Gonzalez said, they wind up killed. We had so many domestic violence cases in the City of Elizabeth that resulted in the death of women, chopping them up, the whole nine yards. That's all, that's, that's domestic violence.
But I'm, I'm not telling you, you know, not to do it, I'm just saying the timing.
What better way? Well, he timed it. We, I didn't time this. He timed it when he struck his wife. And what better way to show our youth in government what government is really about?
I disagree.
Of course you're going to disagree, but you know, you can't hide it. You know what, who, who are we hiding it from? This is, to me, it's the best time for the, it's the best time for the youth to see that we are taking up for them, that we are on their side. Instead of saying, hi, this is a real issue, domestic violence, bullying, you name it. Sexting, sexual, those are real issues that we need to grapple with. And I, he's sitting up there on the board. He should step down, just like Councilor Gorman said. He should have enough decency to say, let me remove myself because what I've done, I crossed the line. I really crossed the line here. And I pray, I'm not saying, I said, because I want to make sure that it's not political. That's it. Will we wait when it's convenient? No, we, you don't wait when it's convenient. That's what, well, that's what you said.
All I, all I said, for the sake of the relationship.
What relationship? Whose relationship?
Of what we have for youth and city government.
That is still, youth and city government will go on. Every year, we do this, we call it some relationships, whatever, I don't know. When you say relationships, I don't even know where that, that is, that is.
That day, that, that day, we worked together.
We worked together, we worked together. We've worked together on a lot of different occasions. When we have parades, we work together. We were just all out there on Sa- Sunday with the Cuban parade, we worked very well on them.
Madam President, I'd just like to say it's, it's unfortunate that it happened, and it's a double-edged sword. It's never a good time for something to happen, but it has to happen. If you're gonna represent our children, so there, there's never a good time. There's never a good time for a divorce, there's never a good time for, for certain things in life. Unfortunately, it's happened, and if there's a protocol or decorum within, whether it's city council or, or Board of Ed, some people have to step up. There's, like I said, there's never a good time for that. And there's never a good time, and I agree with you. But we have to set some type of an example. If no one's gonna set it, then we have to set it. Like I said, it's unfortunate, but you can have, after thirty-one years, you can have all those pieces of papers saying that you have a restraining order, and that still doesn't make you safe. So, I think, like I said, the timing is never right, but we do have to set some type of standard.
Anybody else? Councilor, Councilor Torres?
We've had another accident at West Jersey in D'Hart. We can have the county do another, or do a study, if we can upgrade that. Councilor Mazza's on one side of the street, I'm on the other side, as far as the wards go. And also, the state still hasn't put up any street signs for Elmore and be designating which street is what when they change the traffic light, that's why.
For Dear Heart and, you said Dear Heart?
West, West Jersey and D'Hart.
Is there a stop, are there stop signs?
There's a stop sign on, on your side.
So, we need one, we need a four-way stop sign?
Or an illuminated, either more lighting or two.
Is that the county or the state?
The county is the West Jersey. And D'Hart is the Minnesota.
Because someone said that there was something on Facebook about that.
There was a bad accident.
Okay, did you read it? Because I'm not on Facebook this much.
Yeah, someone posted, it was that accident, they put a picture of it.
And then there's something about the council's not doing anything about it?
No, they, they were just inquiring, trying to figure out, you know, who was the councilman to make them aware of it? But, but I think it's the same, it was the same accident.
Okay, because, yeah, can we try to get something done on that? Because you asked for that before, right, Mazza?
The problem is people, they park too close to the curb, and you really have to go out. I do that every day when I go pick up my granddaughter. And I'm very careful, I actually have to go in the middle of the street to be able to see to the left because traffic comes to the left. First impact, the right is more visible because you can see. But apparently, the people that are living in the area, they like to park illegally, and the traffic should be doing something.
Is it, are there streets, are there painted? Are they painted, the curves?
Yeah. There's many, many apartments, right side, left side, you know, the huge, the Hazel House and all those other buildings there. They're all fighting for the parking space. D'Heart Place especially.
But the answer, I don't know if you want the answer to be to ticket the residents.
Well, we don't want to give the ticket, but at least the resident themselves, they should use common sense, give enough distance to be able to see. Or like you say, a blinking red light that will alert a bad direction, you know, this traffic might come through or whatever, you know? Couple of signs.
Let's see if we can get something really resolved.
Can we save a life is more important than.
Yeah, because I know that someone said there was something on Facebook about it. And they didn't know who to talk to. Okay, is that all you have, Councilor, can you?
Yes, sir.
Councilor Gorman?
I pass.
Okay, Councilor Mazza?
I pass.
Councilor Costa?
Uh, yes, Madam President, very briefly. Madam President, something happened at the Board of Ed meeting recently that really annoyed me and bothered me and, and I have received numerous calls from friends, from neighbors. A couple of individuals displayed a huge flag, a flag that was ten times larger than the American flag. And that is contrary to our former government and what we do. At a public meeting, such as the Board of Ed, the American flag has to be at least the same size as any other flag that is displayed. And I, I find that very, very offensive. And I, I think that we should communicate with President Anna Maria Amin and let her know in no uncertain terms that she really should, she must stop that from happening again. Because in my opinion, either she facilitated this, or she definitely allowed this to happen. It was on TV, it was everywhere, on the news, Facebook, everywhere. So, I, I think that this should not happen again. She should be reminded, you know, the Board of Ed meeting is taking place in Elizabeth, New Jersey. And last time I heard, that's the United States of America. And if you're gonna display a large flag, it should be the United States flag, it should be the American flag, not, not anything else.
Well, I think we should do it in a resolution form.
I would.
And we should condemn the disgracing of the American flag and, on American soil. And, and because that's what it is, just.
That's exactly what it was.
So, we need to condemn the disgracing of Ameri- of the American flag on American soil in a public meeting for public schoolchildren in our city. I mean, if you go, if you visit the UN, all the flags are the same, they're the same. You go to, anybody visit the UN, there's no huge one flag and little other flags. That's, it, it doesn't worry about any type of unity whatsoever. It's disunity, it's disunity. And it's disgraceful, and it's almost bordering on treason. Anything else, Councilor?
No, that's it, thank you.
Councilor Sedenho?
I just have a couple of things. I wanted to add autistic signs to seven sixty-three Salem Avenue.
Okay.
And also wanted to request a traffic study in the corner of Newark Avenue and North Avenue, to try to see if we could do a left, um, left turn signal. I think that would help a lot there in that corner. And I had a, I had a question. There's, um, there's a business, an auto body, and that, they put a lot of their cars, like, on the street, and parking is a big issue. Like, you know, like residents and people, like, picking up their kids, it's a big thing. And a lot of the vehicles they put on the street, you can tell, like, they're in the process of getting fixed. So, it's not like, it's, it's like cars completely intact. It's like, you know, it's missing pieces overall and everything. Just wanted to know, like, currently, like, what the ordinance is with that. Like, they're, they're not allowed to put their vehicles. Um, it's, it's on Pennsylvania Avenue, but it's right by, behind Donald Stewart. I think, it's right by the old Enterprise, right next door.
Right next door.
Yeah, what, what happens, they put, like, around ten to fifteen cars into the street. And a lot of the parents that come to pick up their kids, they, they have a hard time finding parking. But then when they see a row of cars, like, missing pieces too, it's like, you know, it's pretty obvious. And the only thing, this is, I think Frank Mazza's ward, if you're coming up on South Broad Street, right when you're gonna make a left on Pearl Street, where Supremo and.
Right, right.
Is, someone just told me yesterday that there's no sign that says that it's one-way coming up, like, to cross over South Broad Street into Pearl. Like, there's no one-way sign there, because that's a one-way coming up. So, some cars, they make a right there.
I think they are signed, no renter.
Yeah, okay. That's what they just told me yesterday, but I'm not sure. But they said that there's no one-way signs.
You know, the check to sign.
Just the same, but that's it.
Pearl and. Pearl, South Broad.
That's it, thank you.
Probably was, it took me. Yes, Madam President. Haven't heard anything back at all, and I just thought about it, along the DOT letters and the signal traffic, nothing?
Nope, not worth it.
Not acknowledgement, no?
Nothing.
So, what the next, yeah, it's been like, I don't know what next steps do we take?
Traffic symbol upgrade.
Yeah, delayed left turn signals, it's been recommended.
Have we, um, have we sent the letters since there's been a new commissioner?
That's what I was thinking.
Well, I've been sending the letters to the traffic engineer, Mr. Mahalik.
Maybe we could send, you know, send a copy of the letter that we have been sending to Mr. Mahalik with a C.C. to the new commissioner, Jamie Cox.
Okay.
Wasn't Elizabeth hometown boy.
Want to try anything at this point?
Yeah.
It's been a while.
With respect to the hierarchy of DOT, perhaps this way.
Anything, anything will help. And just the last thing, were we able to find on that?
Uh, we will within the week.
In the week?
Yeah.
I just want to thank Councilor Torres. He had two very good, exciting events at his ward on Saturday. One was the Where Children's, Where Angels Play Foundation. They erected a playground in honor of one of the Sandy Hood children that were killed in that massacre. The little boy was seven years old, his parents were there, and it was just a moving, fun, good, it was just a good event. And if you get a chance, you go down and see the playground. I know we all voted on to accept the playground, and, but the firemen and all the volunteers, they came and they built it in like a matter of three days, and it was really nice. And the second one was to get fit for all ages, where they had the Red Bull soccer team down at the waterfront, and it was probably all close to three hundred youth that were there on that day. And so, just thank you for, you know, helping spirit those efforts. It was very nice. That being said?